Hi everyone, you're watching the Virtual Amicus and I'm Jai L Oda. Well, today is indeed a very special day on our channel. Because joining us today is someone who needs absolutely no introduction. She's had a prolific legal career spanning almost forty-five years. Twenty-five, twenty-seven years have been as a judge. Ma'am has, ma'am has been someone whose name has always been synonymous with judicial reforms. Since she's engaged in public consultations and judicial reforms in India. She's spoken at various judicial conclaves passionately on the need of a better infrastructure in courts, addressing crimes against children. She's always been a crusader for child rights, women's rights, human rights of victims of crimes. And always known for her sensitive yet progressive approach in all the cases she's handled. She's also conducted various workshops for honourable judges and lawyers on gender centric decision, arbitration, mediation, human rights, case management, contracts, etc. So joining us today is Honourable Justice Roshan Dalvi Ma'am, who is a former judge of Honourable Bombay High Court. So thank you so much, Ma'am, for taking our time for doing this session. Really means a lot for me and my team. It's a big day for our channel indeed. Ma'am, anything that you wish to say before we start with the segment?
Good evening friends, I'm coming on this channel for the first time, so good evening, enjoy. It's nice to work with youngsters and especially those whom I feel will be the future of our country. And in our legal profession, you must have heard of course many such webinars. But one of the neglected fields is case management. We do not have the subject of case management in our colleges. We do not have a textbook of state of case management in our libraries. But case management is exceedingly important. Because whatever we do in whichever profession, management takes the key. Even doctors, architects have to manage, everyone has to manage. If you know that in your house, in your kitchen, the mother, your mother, your wife may be managing. And if they manage very well, then you would be sitting here listening to me without any tension, without any trauma. Because somebody else is doing your management at home. So you have got time to do your management in your office. So you see, management is the key for many things. And how it would be useful in our profession of lawyers and judges is what I'd like to talk about. So Jay, if you would allow me to share my presentation, I'll just share it in a minute.
Very well, very well, Ma'am, you can please go ahead.
Okay, so I can share?
Yes, Ma'am, I've enabled it.
No. When I will do, where do I get that? Now I'll share. Can you see it? Can you see the presentation?
Absolutely, it's crystal clear.
Okay, very well. Now, shall I keep it on slideshow? Will this be okay?
This is perfectly fine, perfectly.
Okay, so we can start with this. So friends, management must be first understood. And then we can have what we call case management or court management. Today we'll be talking about case management. Now this management of institutions, organizations, whatever, there are five elements. This is actually taught in business schools. And I learnt it in business management in the undergraduate level when I was doing commerce. So the five elements of management are planning, organizing, directing, coordinating, control. Okay, so if you have to write a letter to anyone, you will require all of this. And if you have to manage the country of the size of India, you will require all of these and no more. Okay, so first, when you are going to do anything well, you plan. Today I'm giving you this lecture, so I have planned how I will give that lecture. How it will be of about one, one and a half hours or whatever that is. And how it should have certain slides but not have certain other slides, which may not be important for you. So I've made this plan and I have organized it in my PowerPoint presentation. Okay, now as we go along, let us say we are writing a letter, we plan what we want to write. It's not only for an essay or a book that we plan. Then we organize our thoughts. Then we direct somebody, we may direct a stenographer to take it down. We may direct somebody who knows computer to set it up for us or whatever. So we have to direct. And then we coordinate our work with their work. Because we always work as a team, we always work in a group, we can't work in isolation. And after coordinating all our efforts, we have to control. So in a lawyer's office, the lawyer controls. He will control his stenographer, he will control his junior, he will whatever. In the court, the judge controls. That control is of a captain. I'm not talking about being a boss, I'm talking about being a captain. Okay, so these are the five principles which are propounded by Peter Drucker, who is called the management guru. And as he says, the best way to predict the future is to create it. So you have to change and you have to create what you want, okay? So that's about only management. Now we go to case management. What is case management? Law Justice Wolf, who has given the entire report on case management, on which today the judicial system of UK is working extremely well, is this. Practitioners and judges becoming better at what they do. Now we know that our practitioners and judges know substantive laws very well. We are on par with any in the world. But we also know that our practitioners and judges do not know how to manage their offices and their courts. That is in a shambles. That is, that shows that lawyers and judges are all charged up, not knowing what to do. Things don't fall in place and it gives a very bad image to an outsider. Now which outsiders would see us, our litigants first, okay? So when these litigants come to court and then they talk about, oh, it was going on like this, it was going on like that. Our image suffers. And unfortunately, they pick up all these things. They don't pick up the great principles of jurisprudence of any particular aspect of research that we have done in any of our cases as well as they know. And pick up what we actually show in our courts or in our offices. No, we have no time and what is this, papers are not there, somebody has not come. So all this is shown to them. So we become better at what we are doing is one of the first things of case management. But aside from that, the next thing is achieving what we want to achieve. What do we want to achieve? The same end, we want the same kind of a judgment, we want acquittal or conviction, we want dismissal of the suit or decreeing of the suit or whatever. Same end with less resources and in less time. So we reduce delay and costs. These are the two principal things of case management. Now, go on. Just one minute please. This is what Law Justice Wolf has had to say. He was the master of rules in nineteen ninety's, now he is an arbitrator and mediator in England. After he was elevated to the Supreme Court of England. So how to do more with less, less resources of your client, less amount of time. But how can we give more to our system? That is what case management is all about. So case management, for we must increase, we must understand, for what do we need it? We need it for improving our efficiency. We need it for reducing delays and for cutting costs. Okay? Now let us understand some kind of a history of case management. And ideally, since we are a vibrant democracy, we look up to UK and US. So the beginnings in UK, right way back in nineteen ninety-five, Chief Justice Matthew Taylor gave certain practice directions. Now these are a part of the, of the PCR as they say, the court rules, court rules practice, CRP, sorry. So that is to have shorter and flexible trial schemes, civil procedure rules of the Ministry of Justice. Okay, this, this, this has been, it's like our statute. We don't have a statute on case management, but they have. And from time to time it is amended, I think the last amendment is of June twenty-two. Even in America, they have the CPR, that is the civil practice rules. And they amend it from time to time by practice directions. Now what were those practice directions right from nineteen ninety-five? Judges were to assert control. It is not that we have an acquisitorial system and not an inquisitorial system. So a judge comes and sits down and lawyers and parties do what, whatever they want. It should not be like that. The judges must say that this are the discipline modes and this is what you will have to exercise. Like they do in all fields, in all professions, in all sports, wherever there is a team and then there is a captain. So attorneys to reduce delays and costs, to cooperate with the court, judges to assert control. Okay, then the courts would limit discovery because sometimes it goes on for months, which really augurs not well on anyone. Oral submissions, because in England, America, they have half an hour of oral submissions and then it goes to the other party, they don't go on and on and on like our lawyers. Then examination, examination is the examination in chief and they had completely overrun the system, which is what we have now incorporated. So we'll go to that because that you will know very well. Cross-examination also, what things cannot be said mainly irrelevancy and repetition. Then reading of documents, whether we have to read any documents or you have to leave it to the court to read documents and judgments and just give them compilation so that the judge really works at home. So this is what sets the discipline mode in England. And then there is a checklist for ADR. So every litigant must cooperate with the mediation system mainly. ADR is of course everything, arbitration, mediation, conciliation. And here we have the local allies also. And there is a checklist which has to be actually filled up at the time of filling up of the form for registering your civil case. Okay, so this is the set mode in the UK. Then we had in nineteen ninety-six, the Law Wolf Report. The basic features of this report is procedural simplicity. So we don't be very technical, we don't say that all these requires applications and applications and writing and somebody has to reply and then we give a one-line order, which means nothing really. So there should be procedural simplicity for expedition and there should be control by judges as soon as the defense is filed. So now this goes with judges reading the brief. This goes with lawyers being abreast of whatever is in the case. And not saying that I will take instructions for every little thing, I'll go to my client, my client is not present, I will take instructions, then you adjourn. You see, it's not like that. So as soon as the defense is filed, and that is what now I do even in my arbitrations, we must find out the admissions, for example. Then we must find out which are the admitted documents. So we narrow down the issues, then we frame the issues and we take in the other documents which must be proved after an affidavit of evidence is filed. This is the basic superstructure, but there are many other things before and after which I will go. So now case management in UK under Law Wolf Report, these are the aspects which were incorporated in their Civil Procedure Act of nineteen ninety-seven. Now I think we have the Civil Procedure Act of twenty twenty. So every time it gets updated, you know, with the digitalization of courts etc., which has also come into the system in England. So we have the length of time for litigation. Now I was studying in England as a judge, the British justice system in nineteen ninety-six when Law Wolf Report came out. And I was told and I was really amazed and intrigued that they had a system of thirteen-week window for all magistrate courts. So whatever is the case before the magistrate must end, that is the trial in thirteen weeks. Okay, now this thirteen weeks spilled over to fourteen weeks. And as soon as that happened, there was an uproar in the country. That managerial system is, not managerial, I'm sorry. The managerial system is not working well and it has taken fourteen weeks for this case to end into a judgment, acquittal or conviction. And there was a nationwide, not only protest but a conference, which was attended by the Law Chief Chancellor, who is the highest criminal law functionary in England. And everyone came together and said, what has gone wrong? That from thirteen weeks we have come to fourteen weeks, as if to say, some heavens have fallen, we would feel. But that is how they take care of their system. And they nip things in the bud if there is anything going astray. And in that conference, they decided what to do, what not to do and how to do. So length of time for litigation is extremely important in these kind of jurisdictions with work like Rolls Royce. Okay, we are not talking about will of cards. Then the second is fast track and multi-track system. So to have some kind of a distinction, that you will have to spend less time or more time, they had this fast track and multi-track. Certain cases, and I'll tell you presently which ones, would go straight into faster and would have to be finished in a thirteen-week window. And costs would be capped in that and evidence would be less. And inspection would be just as you go to court. There was everything which was sort of expedited in a fast track one. We have now fast track courts, at least in Maharashtra that I know of, which are criminal courts. And surprisingly, they are working better than those other courts, which are, I would say, slow track courts. But then there is also a multi-track system. So if a case really deserves a lot of evidence, like there they have medical negligence cases, for example, which come on top of this multi-track ladder. Then of course, the court will have patience and go through everything. Just as we say, that you know, certain cases are open and shut cases, you know? Or there is nothing except default, so we have to finish it up quickly. But certain cases are arguable, arguable by both sides. No judge is in a hurry to disperse of arguments, okay? So we go through it, but how we make this arguments, oral or in writing? What do we give the court? Do we go on reading judgments that we are going to cite as we do quite often? Do we go on reading the documents or we only show the court the most relevant parts and leave it? Cross-three, cross-fifty-three and cross-forty-six are the ones which are important. It is the business of the judge to read it at home. That is what they do in those democracies, okay? So that is the fast track and the multi-track system and how it works for length of time of litigation. Then there is a fixed timetable. Now we have begun to have it under the Commercial Court Act. And therefore judges are giving dates, I'm talking about the Bombay jurisdiction of which I have personal knowledge. Now when judges give dates, they must give dates which they will honor. They want, they must give dates which the litigants and the lawyers must have, no matter what. So that those matters come up before the court. Now if any single one is lethargic or if any single one is negligent, the whole system collapses and this fixed timetable becomes a flexible timetable, does anything anybody can do at any time. And of course, courts also have, have to cut their boards because there is less of, not less number of judges, there are too many matters, courts are packed to capacity with work, they cannot take up all matters. Now we've, courts give case management directions and fix up a timetable, that you have to file your written statement on this date and then you have to do inspection and discovery by this date and issues will be taken on that date. Then when the next time the matter has to come up on board for whatever reason, under whatever caption, it must come up on board. And if that doesn't come up on board also, the whole thing collapses. The next thing there is controlling inspection. Now quite often we find, even in our arbitrations we find, that inspection means the lawyer doesn't know what those other documents are. The lawyer has not read those documents at all. So he doesn't say that, oh, this is absolutely irrelevant, I don't want to see. I want to see document numbers one, nine and twenty-seven. This is how you have to have inspection because that shows your application of mind. But that is not sure. So under the Law Wolf Report in England, obviously it was not done even in England before that, you have to control inspection. So the judges will say that this is the main agreement. Now there is one agreement which is admitted, there is one agreement which is denied. Okay, give inspection after the denied document. And therefore the party may not have to give inspection of all the emails and all the correspondence and all of those things. So you control inspection, then exchanging witness statements. This is the one thing that we have picked up mercifully. So when we are exchanging witness statements, what we do is we file an affidavit of evidence or an affidavit in lieu of examination in chief, that is how it is called in our jurisdictions. But in England, it goes one step further under the Law Wolf Report. And that is that all the witness statements, I want to have six witnesses. So therefore these are the statements of all the six witnesses, I give it to the defendant. And the defendant's lawyer will say, I have got these witnesses and these are my statements. So both parties exchange what we call the affidavit of evidence. But here, that is not that, you've got the system, you've got the performer of the affidavit of evidence so that we don't record evidence of examination in chief. We start with the cross-examination. After of course, we consider the documents which are marked, which have to be marked etc. But exchanging witness statements would mean that all the witnesses, at least of that party, their statements must be filed together. And that is the system that we have now in the Commercial Court Act. So under the Commercial Court Act and under the amended CPC, you would have to file affidavit of examination in chief of all your witnesses, which is also not done. Next we go to video recording of evidence. Now, one of the good points of COVID and there have been many others also is that we have all started working like today. We are all working very comfortably now online. I conduct all my arbitrations and mediations online. I rarely ever now meet the lawyers and litigants in person. But, and it goes on very well, you see? So we have video recording of evidence from nineteen ninety-six in England. And now we have started having video recording of evidence. Now even in this, there are some glitches for that. And of course, the person in charge has to be in control. And now, for example, in my arbitrations, when I am in arbitrage, I am in control and I tell them how I'm going to have it recorded, so there is no need to worry. Now you are seeing me, you are seeing what is behind me, you are not seeing what is in front of me. Similarly, I would see the lawyer, I'm seeing Jay just now. And I'm seeing his face and what is behind me, but I don't know what is in front of me. So I tell them to keep another device right behind the computer and I can see the entire room. So the witness is left alone, the witness is asked whatever questions, video recording of the evidence takes place perfectly well. Okay? Then there is summary procedure for all suits below ten thousand pounds. Now we have also short matters, petty matters. In America, they call it petty, petty claims. So these petty claims are really where you reach out to the people. Because people in the street would have petty claims. It's not only the big things that must come up before the courts. And therefore this must be taken up, summarily you must finish it up. You can take the WhatsApp messages, you can take all the emails on record, whatever way that it works, at that time in nineteen ninety-six, there was no WhatsApp. But there were emails even in England and they used to take everything together and then see that there is a small dispute, give it to the man quickly. And they used to be disposed of. So these were the real aspects of the Law Wolf Report. The others are that you must define important issues. Now this is extremely important. We have in our CPC, under Order fourteen, Rule two, preliminary issues and other issues. Okay, so preliminary issues only refer to jurisdiction limitation etc., jurisdiction under way. But not others, but we had Order fifteen, Rule three, today it is deleted. Or with an entire Order fifteen has gone, I don't know why. But a very salutary provision, where if in any issue, by any issue, the court can dispose of the suit, the court must do that. And I have disposed of a couple of suits like that as a trial judge. So defining important issues is what they call taking up the most important issue first. So it doesn't matter that it is not only a preliminary issue relating to jurisdiction or any bar, but it matters that it is the most important issue by which other issues need not be settled at all, need not be answered also. So that is the important thing that lawyers and judges must pick up and that requires skill. And of course, reading. Then there is a timetable deadline, which is like giving dates etc., a timeframe. So you are given deadlines and you cannot exceed the deadline. You exceed the deadline only on payment of penalty, which need not even be granted by the court. It is implicit in the rules. You have been asked to do, complete your inspection on Friday and you have not done it, you kept it over till Saturday, you will have to pay five hundred pounds. You see, so it goes to the other side, so there are those deadlines. And then there is of course ADR, which will take up a whole entire separate webinar. I won't go into that, mediation is the most important, picking up everywhere, very well settled in England, Canada, America. Judicial team is what is important, as we say that we work as a team so that you know, we do one another's work. There are certain things that judges do that lawyers cannot do, there are certain things that lawyers do that judges cannot do. But for that, we have to train lawyers and judges and ideally together. Not really that some training is only for lawyers and some only for judges, which is what we have quite often, but we have together also. Because they are the best stakeholders of our system. Then comes interest and costs. Now this does not even have to be said, every time, all the time it was there. So when you grant interest and now see under the Arbitration Act, you can done two percent more than the bank amount. Even if the arbitrator does not say that, it will be two percent more than what the banks charge. Okay, so that it becomes a deterrent. The purpose is that, somebody must not say, oh, it's six percent of interest, I have paid because I have made eighteen percent. It should not be like that. So that is important. And of course, cost of everything that you do wrongly is adjudged there, which we don't do here. And we all the time sort of gloss over it, but that is extremely important. We have the provision for compensatory costs now under section thirty-five A. But how many courts give compensatory costs and how is it compensated? Compensatory cost must be such as would compensate the party who has been damaged. And that is not that, that is done then. Then there are IT kiosks, which is of course their infrastructure. Now we have also various IT things in our EPOS etc. And then there is permanent advice centers in larger courts. So may I help you desk sort of, and everyone can go there. And whatever are the queries can be and must be solved by those officers there. So we don't sort of, you know, a litigant doesn't roam about in the court not knowing where to go. Then there are evening and weekend courts for small matters, for matters which can be disposed of quickly. We can also do that for, let us say, all withdrawal matters, all consent term matters can come up in the evening or in the weekend, I used to do it in my recess time also. So those little things go off the board. Then these are the areas of case management. What do we have? Length of time for each step and that is like the calendar that we have. Then there are key issues, so that we narrow down the issues. Once we find out what are the admitted facts and admitted facts need not only be those facts where the defendant says, I admit so and so. Whatever is tacitly admitted, we find out from the defense that this agreement has executed. So it becomes an admitted document. So we find out those admissions and then whatever are the disputed facts are the only things that go into issues and evidence. Then even listing cases, how they come up on board and whether the litigant has got that right. Now we've got Article twenty-two in our constitution and we have got a right to a fair trial. But so often, for so many months, cases don't even come up for the first time in the court. Is that access to justice at all? So you have to list the cases as soon as they are filed. And as soon as the case is numbered, it gets listed in whichever court that cuts. Of course, the court may not be able to take it up on the first date at all. But at least the litigant knows that it is in that court and then follows up on the website, which are the next dates. Then comes the pre-trial conference or the court management conference. Now we have pre-trial mediation. After we have had pre-trial conferences, so that goes in the ADR system of course. So that as soon as a case is filed or even before a case is filed, sometimes we can have mediation, you know? And we used to have that in the family court in Mumbai for some time. As some woman, when she comes and says that, you know, I should receive this notice, she doesn't know what to do. Our counselors used to call your husband and try to settle that matter. So we have a pre-trial conference before the trial begins and after the pleadings are filed. There is one preliminary meeting as we have in our arbitrations, where we thresh out all of this. But this, the very great precondition is that judges as well as lawyers are well prepared. They have read the papers, then they would know what are the admissions, what are the issues, what are the, who are the witnesses, which witnesses will come first, second etc. And they set up the entire conference. Then they have us again, setting a timetable deadline for the urine. That is the preparatory urine, that you have to do all of these inspections, interrogatories, whatever else that you want. Ideally, I would say, even if inspection is not complete, a judge can Ideally, I would say, even if inspection is not complete, a judge can and must start the trial. And as soon as that document is relied upon, if it is not inspected, you can't rely upon it. So you will have to give it to the other side. And inspection could be completed there and then. So there are various things that have set the ball rolling, and that ball rolls very efficient. So this is England for you. And now we have to see what can be applicable to us. Because we must always understand the ground realities of India. It's no point saying that we will keep five matters on board and all those five will be disposed of, because it doesn't get disposed of in our system. Okay? So what do we do? In England, there are simple rules of procedure. Now, we can also amend the CPC and the High Court rules and make them as simple as possible. Then in England, defense is very essential. Whatever is the, is the plate. Now it is called the complaint actually. So it is a prescribed form where you write down certain columns. Like you are filling up any form, and then there is a specified word limit where you only summarize your case. So you only give the facts in that complaint. There are no submissions, there are no judgments, there are no prayers, nothing. That is separate. And as soon as that is filed, you can have any one defense. Now here, and again, I talk mainly of Bombay. And that is, we have a written statement, because the CPC says written statement. But in most of the commercial matters, almost all, what we have is an interim proceeding. And in the interim proceeding, we take out an, a notice of motion, we call it in Bombay. But it may be called just an interim application everywhere else, there is an affidavit in the back. Now, this shows whatever the defendant wants to say. Yet, after the interim application is disposed of, whatever order is passed. Then the court says, now you serve the summons. Does that make any sense? It is like saying that you have paid the fees in a club, for example, and then you say now you fill the form of admission. But we do that. And if we don't do that, then we say, okay, now you file your written statement. So after an affidavit and reply comes the written statement, the plaintiff says I'll file a counter. And all those things go on and there is repetition after repetition. But if you have just any one kind of defense, then as soon as whatever is filed in the interim or in the final application, that rules the rules. Then we go to exchanging witness statements, as I told you. Here we have affidavit of examination in chief. And for small claims, fast track and multi-track that they have, we have summary suits. Now, summary suits under order thirty seven of the CPC also can be and must be disposed of summarily. Because if you find that there is no substantial defense, immediately a judgment must follow, but it doesn't follow. And if there is an admission and order twelve, rule six comes into play. There must be a judgment on admission. But what they say is that we deposit that about in the summons for judgment. Now, what is the point in depositing? Because the man wants it, the court doesn't want it. The plaintiff wants it. So when you have summary suits and you're disposed of, you give the judge. Okay. Then there are specialist judges under the Lord Paul's Report itself, but which is not the case management, but it is a court management. And therefore, they have criminal and civil judges, which are separate, original and appellate side judges we have. But they don't have that much of separation. Maybe we can have expert judges. They are called specialist judges. Okay. Then we have fixed fees either for one stage or as a whole. Now, these fees are not the court fees. These are fixed fees which the lawyers can charge. Now, you will say, how can a lawyer charge fixed fees? Because a lawyer, whatever he commands, he can take. Yes, he can do that. But whatever that he commands and he wants to take can be fixed for whatever relief that is going to give his client. It's not only for adjournment, it's not only for reading, it's for actually delivery of goods. So what we could have is a package deal. What is a package deal? We will understand best when we understand tourism. Now, you know, earlier, the tour, the tour guides used to book only flight tickets. Then they started booking hotels, then they started booking tours, then they started giving you taxis and cars. They give you so many other such facilities. It's a package deal. And we like it very much, because we have no time to deal with all of those, so we go in a tour and we pay the whole price. Similarly, a litigant comes to court. Ideally, a lawyer must say, if there is going to be case management, yes, I will charge you one lakh of rupees. But I will give you this order within six months. It is a package deal. And you may ask any litigant, do you want only an interim order or will you pay me more for the final order? I'll give you the final order. There won't be a single litigant who will say, I want an interim order. He will pay you more, but he wants delivery of goods. That is what must be remembered. And then things get set. Then there is ADR, which of course we also have, as I told you, and there is capping of costs. Because there, what happens is if a party feels that my case is really very good, the party takes all sorts of applications and all. Because once he, he wins the suit, I mean, his suit is decreed or whatever, if he's a defendant, if the suit is dismissed. He can get back all the costs. And those costs run into millions of pounds. When I was in England, some damages suit of twenty seven million pounds, the plaintiff got when several pounds with two point five million costs. It was that big, you know? So now they have got capping of costs. So that you don't take out unnecessary applications just because your case is going to be good. So you take out the applications only which are required, and that is the real skill of the lawyer. So you, and in our country, we have to impose realistic costs. When you know that a party has gone through a lot of hassle because of the whatever is wrong, the default or the fraud or whatever of the other party, then you must get reasonably realistic costs. And that is in our CPC now, but it must be done in practice. So now, what is the ambit of our case management? One is procedural and one is substantial. So you require infrastructure, which of course the government has to give. Now we have got free infrastructure like today. You can always have a cross-examination exactly like this online, and of course, sensitivity. Sensitivity of lawyers and judges, not only of one party. Everyone has to be sensitive as to what the litigant has to do, because judges take vote. Today lawyers don't take vote. Mahatma Gandhi had taken vote in Thursdays. But we all don't, you all don't take vote. But are we true to our oath? And what is that oath? The oath implies that we don't default, that we don't do unnecessary things. It implies that because there should be integrity, there should be impartiality, and there should be efficiency. Okay. So that calls for sensitivity. Now we take our system only, and what I will tell you, these are the stages where case management would come into play. Plane, first of all. We have planes in Bombay of two hundred and fifty pages also. It has got submissions, it has got judgments, it has got entire reproduction of various emails and correspondence, bad drafting. There was one judge, when he was given a huge fat plane, he said, I have not got the plane. So the associate said that, no, you are not, this is the plane. He said, no, I'm not got. The advocates presumably started assisting. No, no, what is this green and what is that big thing? That is the plane. He says, no. Plane has to be brief, concise, and precise. This doesn't seem to be either brief or concise or precise. So it is not a plane, I am rejecting. File a proper plane. I like it. We don't do that quite often. I don't know what happens in other jurisdictions. I'm now working in, with someone from Jaipur, and I hope Jaipur is not as bad. But planes must be brief, concise, and precise, so that it becomes crystal clear. That is the first thing of case management. Second comes service. Now, when do you have to serve? You have to serve the party who doesn't know what you are doing. So if you are filing a suit for damages, if you are filing a suit for this recovery of money without any intermission before, because you can find that. The lawyer's notice is not a mandatory requirement, you have to serve the ripper's. But if you are going to apply for any interim relief, as soon as the suit is filed, because there is an urgent relief required. And you will be giving the papers and proceedings to the defendant. You then have to serve. You have been served, the defendant has been served the papers and proceedings, there is no need for further service. And if you have to serve, which is the way, now our order nine rule five says, in any mode. The Supreme Court has said you can serve by WhatsApp also. The CPC says you can serve by email also. And all those modes must be effective, so that, you know, you, you must be able to give notice and knowledge to the other party without much waste of time, without much waste of cost. Then comes the added interim relief. Now, the added interim relief is before even the interim relief. So if some bad party wants some kind of a order for, as a working order. It must be worked out quickly and in a short span of time and in a, in a short order. That is the true yardstick of an added interim relief, so that interim relief can then be seen. Otherwise, if all the proceedings are filed, then you must go back, you straight off to an interim application. When all affidavits are filed and everyone has argued, then there is nothing like added interim relief, which also happens, and I'm talking about Bombay again only. But, and this is a repetition then, for an interim relief, it is case mismanagement. You must then say, or the judge must then say, that this will clear out the interim application and then give directions for filing. So again, then you have one defense for all of this. So if in your interim application, there is a counter or there is a written statement, or there is an affidavit in reply, by whatever name called, it is the defense. And once the defense comes, there is no need for further defense. Therefore then, from these, the interim application and the defense, you would be able to know which are the admissions. And you have to record those admissions, and you have to get them recorded when you are a lawyer, that these facts are admitted. Okay? So there will be no evidence on those. Then the issues get narrowed, so that you go to the most important issue. We may not call it the most important issue, we may have all issues so far, because there is no change in our legislation. So we have issues, but they can be narrowed down. And then starts the evidence. Now, every single suit does not require oral evidence. Evidence is of two types, oral and documentary. And there are some suits which may be disposed of on documentary evidence. There are some suits which are arguable and which can be disposed of even on only arguments, if it's a point of law or whatever. Fewer there are, of course. And only where oral evidence is required, we require an affidavit of evidence of all the witnesses of one party. They can be redacted if you want afterwards, you don't want to examine another witness, okay, fine, sure. They can be redacted under the amended CPC itself, and whatever is the evidence then comes up before the court from day to day altogether. Okay? Now, to take this cross-examination, we do this in our arbitrations, but to take this cross-examination in the court may be a very fine skilled job for someone who likes trials as much as I do. But that is the only thing which we have been allowed to outsource from nineteen ninety nine and two thousand and two. When the CPC was amended and under the Salem Bar Association case, when it was first, the amendment under order eighteen, rule four was upheld. Okay? So now what happens is, since this is the only thing that we can outsource to court commissioners, court commissioners are important stakeholders. They have to be trained, they must be sensitized, they must be given certain basic rules, and they can record the class examination. Now, then again, commissioners are appointed, the parties do want it, so that it comes, comes out of the court system. But the recording is not with case management. So anything goes and all sorts of questions are asked. It was one matter where four hundred and eight questions were asked, and I actually used about thirteen only, after going through all that rubbish when I was a judge. So you see, that the commissioner cannot do, and therefore it lies on good counsel, good lawyers only to do that. Because ultimately, only showing the client that you are spending so much time because you are going to be paid per day is not the right thing to do. But if you get a package deal and you are going to be paid for the entire case for giving the ultimate order to the client, you would not do this. And then there would be streamlining, which is case management. Okay? Then we have certain things which will tidy up our system. For example, rejection of plane. Every plane cannot be rejected, of course, but under order seven, rule eleven, we can reject planes if it is barred by limitation, if court fees is not paid, if there is no jurisdiction, etc. So those cases go off, then therefore, those preliminary issues under order fourteen, rule two, I have no use then. Once that is out, so the plane could be rejected or it could be sent to proper court. Then comes oral applications, many of which are made, many of which many judges want to make or wanted in writing. But we don't require everything in that. So only oral applications and then orders passed by way of directions can just make the suit cool. Then of course, original documents. Now, I used to always have this system that everyone must get original documents every day to court. It solves most problems. In few cases, when the document itself is denied as fabricated or any such thing, it is immediately available, I can found it. It is immediately available for inspection. Okay? So that is a good practice and we can see that, because otherwise so many people say Xerox copies and they are not admitted, etc. Then there is a preliminary decree under order twenty. Several of our suits can result in preliminary decree. Partnership suits, administration suits, partition suits, suits for accounts, profits, etc. So then preliminary decree has to be passed. Now in twenty twenty one, there is a Supreme Court judgment, I think Supreme Court or Court, High Court, one court judgment which says that after a preliminary decree is passed, the judge must immediately take up the matter for final decree. That doesn't happen. What is the use of a preliminary decree then? You have to only ascertain the shares of the parties, and that's okay, everybody knows. But how does the party get that much share? For example, there is an administration suit, they have one man died, leaving behind four sons. All have to get equally, there is no will. One son says, this is gifted to me. Okay, fine, that is separate. But whatever is there, that must be one fourth. Now, if you just give the preliminary decree that it is one fourth for all, it makes no sense to the litigant. Unless he gets that one fourth, and that is the final. So that must follow immediately in a good court system. And now for all of these, and for all the various kinds of suits that we have and the documents that are required in commercial matters, we require a compilation. So everything comes together and it can be read, and that would streamline the issue. Then comes arguments. Arguments can be oral or in that. If there are detailed oral arguments, then you can give only bullet points. I tell them, now they say, I will give you written arguments. I say, I'm not going to read it. You give me bullet points. I made my notes. So they give it in one page or whatever. If, of course, some parties say we want to give written arguments, fine, you decide. Then oral arguments must be cutted, or they may not be there at all. The judge can read the written arguments and then call upon the parties for whatever questions that he has or she has. After that comes the judgment. It must be oral or it can be reserved, and of course, it must be given within the timeframe of those thirty days, sixty days, and at the most, ninety days. Then summary judgments. Now, there is a provision now in our system for summary judgments. But summary judgments are very common in America, and they have been important even in England. Now we have got it under the Commercial Courts Act and under the amended CPC. So if we have got any matter where oral evidence is not required, the lawyers must say, because they know the matter threat. The lawyers must tell the court that I'm applying for summary judgment. I'm applying for judgment on arguments. Please hear the question of law, the question of facts, the interpretation of documents, whatever that is, and give your ruling. There is no need for oral evidence. I have written a book and I have written a very interesting case in that of how I saw that in one matter, there was no oral evidence required. Both parties went in appeal. The court said when both parties want to lead evidence, then how can the judge say no? So lead evidence, I led evidence, every single sentence was redundant and irrelevant. And I gave the judgment and I spoke about it, that this is what I had done. And ultimately, it is the same thing that I have done, because no part of the oral evidence is used. So that is how it happens. Then there may not be many cases, but there are quite a few where oral evidence may not be required. We get that in arbitrations. There are parties who say, I don't want to lead oral evidence. It's fine, only on documentary evidence we can decide. So that must be the system. Then of course, costs, as I said, realistic costs, ADR, separating and summary suits, which I already told you about, summons for judgment, etc. Now, while we are dealing with this, it is very essential that we consider some of the basic features of the Commercial Courts Act. Because that is the first legislation which sets out the modicum of case management in our system. So there is a case management hearing, and this hearing is under order fifteen ruling. So we must always Commercial Courts Act along with the amendment of the CPC of two thousand and fifty. Okay? Okay, so case management hearing is in order fifteen A and for some reason order fifteen is deleted, which was also a very good order. But that is the case management hearing and these hearings are taking place, but they are not being enforced and confirmed. Because somebody, some party defaults or the judge cannot take up the matter. Then there is summary judgment, as I told you, whenever you can decide without oral evidence, the court can decide sometimes on an interim application. If there is a question of law or something like that, or only interpretation of documents, the suit can be disposed of, that is summary judgment. But the right lawyer must apply. The lawyers are not applying, they don't know. And the judges may not have read when the matter just comes up on board, all judges cannot read, but when the matter goes on, then the judge must read of course. Okay, so you must tell the court, a good lawyer will tell the court that this requires summary judgment. Okay, then there is pre-litigation mediation. So we have, as I told you, in some of the matters now, under the Commercial Courts Act, under order twelve rule eight, as soon as a suit is filed, it must go for mediation. And I don't know how it is working in different jurisdictions, but it is not working in Bombay and it is not something we can be proud of at all. Because everywhere, there is now compulsory mediation. There is in Canada, there is automatic mediation. So immediately after a particular procedure, uh, in our case, it would be when the issues have to be framed. That it goes for automatic mediation and it has been held that it does, it is compatible with Article Six of the European Convention on Human Rights. Because what they say, oh, my compulsory mediation, I don't want to go to media, therefore my right of trial is gone. No, they say, it has not gone. Because mediation is always good, you must give it a good try. And you will find that by keeping good relations, you can also get a good one. And by giving up a little bit, you can keep more relations for further business transactions, family relations, all sorts of things. So that is an important aspect and that is in our Commercial Courts Act, accountability. Is in our Commercial Courts Act, we have to be accountable for all the costs, etcetera, that have been incurred in the litigation. Then the written statement, hundred and twenty days, which is just like hundred and twenty days under the Arbitration Act also under section thirty-four. And it should not be extended. You must tell your client that you have to do it and otherwise it will go by the wall. So the clients come. Then all documents in the affidavit of documents. So now you have to put up all documents and if there are more documents, you take leave of court, etcetera. Of course, we generally grant. But that doesn't speak well of a judge, uh, or, or, or of a lawyer. Because that shows that the lawyer was not prepared first and he has found out his mistakes and he wants more documents. So that should be avoided if there is case management, putting all the documents at one time when we are confering with your client. Then there should be affidavits of all witnesses. Now that is a legal provision which again is followed only in default quite often. And judgment of course, within ninety days, which all judges must adhere to. So now there are the C P C amendments for our case management. Article, section thirty-five is cost, written statement, hundred and twenty days, interest. It is a specific provision, interest details, then again under order eight, written statement. Deniers, now we have to give with reasons. Not that many people are doing it, but why are you denying a particular fact? That has to be stated under order eight twenty-eight, which is a very sound case management practice. And disclosure with the pleadings only and within thirty days. All disclosure has to be made, you have to show it to the other side, etcetera. Interrogatory is out there. Inspection has to be given thirty plus thirty days. Admissions and denials come thereafter, which is extremely important. I would say admissions is even more important than denials. With everything else can be taken as denied. Then costs for undue denials is now in our system and that must be granted to all those advocates who unduly deny simplistic things. In one of my arbitrations, they've denied an agreement, which has got the arbitration clause. So I have to tell them that you have appointed me the arbitrator, why do you do that? There is no arbitration because there is no agreement. And then they admitted they agree. It was as stupid as that, I'd say. But that's how things go sometimes. Then there are admitted, then there is production of documents. So production of documents also must be within seven and fifteen days, those time limits are later, so that the courts give those case management directions. And electronic records to be proved by printout only. You have to prove it that way. Of course, there is a certificate that has to be given, which is only for private documents, that it has come out of my computer. And now there is a judgment in arbitration that, say, sixty-five B certificate is not required. Then there is case management hearing, which is what happens. How many will you file your written statement? When will you give your admissions and denials and all that full timetable is set out? And then there is summary judgment again in the amended C P C and in the commercial process. I'm sorry, I've gone to the earlier thing. It is here. So there is a summary judgment under order thirteen A. Fifteen is of course omitted and there is case management hearing under order fifteen A. Then written arguments are allowed. With the result, oral arguments must be lessened or scrapped. Then affidavit of evidence of all witnesses, everything is together, you know, in the C P C and in the Commercial Courts Act. And it is worth incorporating and everything else also. Then there is court control of evidence, a court can exclude whatever evidence that the court doesn't want. And therefore, there may be no cross-examination if it is stuck off. Court may read that or reject any evidence if inadmissible and affidavit of evidence in described format. So it shows that you must put only some of these disputed facts and nothing else. And of course, judgment within ninety days. So quickly, having gone through, I would say that everything is in your hands. And therefore, I would say, if it is to be, it is up to me. If each one of you resolve to manage your things better, our entire system will become better. And that will be your contribution to your country. Thank you.
Well, thank, what can I say ma'am? I'm totally speechless at the moment, speechless at the sheer brilliance that I've witnessed uh, on the virtual Amicus. Uh, to all the viewers who are watching, now you all know why, you know, in the beginning of the present, uh, session, I said that ma'am has inspired a generation of lawyers. Uh, well, this is a perfect testament, this session. And thank you so much ma'am, uh, for taking our time, for doing this session. Anything that you wish to say as parting words before we wrap up our segment?
I wish you all, all the best. Please be sensitive to the cause of your own clients and to the cause of the other side also. Because you are officers of the court. You will be able to manage better, better than my generation has done.
Well, those were really inspiring words. Well, ma'am is someone who's always combined the knowledge of business and commerce with the ideals of case management to streamline and expedite disposal, not just in domestic but also in our international arbitrations. Uh, thank you so much, uh, Justice Dalvi ma'am for taking our time, for doing this session, to all the viewers who are watching. Well, if you still haven't subscribed, you should do it immediately. So our email is also mentioned on the channel, feel free to write to us. Thank you so much ma'am, once again for your time for this stellar presentation on case management. I'm sure this will help all our viewers who are watching. And this is something that can be viewed by not just anyone who is a part of the legal fraternity, but otherwise as well. Because I'm sure it will be immensely benefit, uh, all, to everyone whoever watches it. Thank you so much ma'am, once again. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Good luck to all of you.